Your phone ain't gonna fit on here.
I'm going to start it off by introducing the Employee of the Month, Officer Joshua Abercrombie. He's been with our agency now for seven years. As you can tell, he's assigned to our K-9 unit. What I want to tell you about Abercrombie is, is... Watch on there. Joshua. Oh, Joshua Abercrombie. Oh, he is truly what you look for in a police officer. He's giving, he gives at his time, he gives everything he does, with himself and his family, himself and his dogs, on a daily basis, and he never wants slants. So if he's up here right now, it's very uncomfortable for those of us who don't know him. But it's an honor that I'm able to recognize him, or help recognize him as Employee of the Month. Back in July, two of our city employees, Laura and Erica Thrift, got firsthand knowledge of the ability of Officer Abercrombie, and we're going to let them know how to take things away from these. I'm in the area of Council, Officer Chris.
The Crown.
Okay, I'm in the Crown. So Eric and I walked out of work, and on July 12th, during our post-work walk during Don Patterson's meeting, we were unaware of an active pursuit by the Adams County Sheriff's Department. Officer Abercrombie effectively intercepted the chase, which, which took place at the intersection of Mary Street and Patterson. We were moments from crossing the crosswalk when he hit his tire. His prompt activation of his emergency tire prevented us from crossing and potentially suspend his severe injuries as the suspect barreled through the stop sign followed by the sheriff's department. We then witnessed Officer Abercrombie's remarkable pursuit and apprehension of the suspect who bled a foot. Officer Abercrombie, his commitment to public safety, even at personal risk, is both admirable and impressive, while all officers value their duty. Officer Abercrombie's actions have been on this district, his dedication to protect his service. And we personally want to thank you so much because that was a close call, and we...
Yeah, I don't know why this folks doing it.
All right, we'll now move on to item three, the minutes approval from July 25th. To the council meeting, council committee members, are there any conditions or releases at this time? Seeing done, hearing done, and then it's approved by confirmation, we move on to item four. This is a public hearing. Consideration of ordinance for conditional use targets for an events center in Highway 10, Zoe District, as requested by asking Saseo, Matt Harden, our line of directors present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Such a property, such a needed, 2161 being approved, it's a private commercial. It is also in our urban commercial quarter of the Wayne District. Most specifically, it is a small commercial center. Been there for several years. It has a lot of history and mass, including the same, such a property is one of the chief causes of the crisis of the center. This is nearly north of the Castle Park Shopping Center, and directly across, much of the rules that make sense to you, too. There's different spaces within the center. Are dedicated, large, consistent, as I have said, for many years. This is not that kind of space, it's actually a kind of space that's covered, it's about 4,000 square feet. If you look at the area, it is quite top, it's a little wider than the floor, it's very narrowed building, it's about 4,000 square feet. This whole building has a fire strength of system, some deeper space, certain areas of the shape is a four-point bracket, and it's all, and it's actually outside. One of the important things to note here, is you see a lot of parking around the southern property or on the property, not all over the same notion. You look at the properties, parking lot directly in front of the West River, it's red, you see that it's actually two different parking lots, that's what constitutes two different properties, two different owners. It was, I think it used to be a chain of events that separated. The applet only has access to the parking lot, that is always property, you know, a lot of the parking spaces is shared with the center. The rest of the parking lot you see to the south, belongs to the Castle Park Shopping Center. Also to the east, you see the wider colored, they have another parking lot, but also part of the Castle Park Shopping Center. Castle Park owners do not, you know, longer have a shared parking agreement with this center, so they don't use to have, and this is a common sense, and that's the descriptions of that area, in fact. But it would be, I mean, the fact that of course, it's a small sketch, would be, I mean, one of the, the matters of more of this kind of city, connects to the west of the building. Imagery, subject property is, being sort of this, more further, the west side of the building, subject property itself, is a great distance along the hill. And then a close-up view of that part of the building, large nightclub that has been up for years, the green portion of that, view toward the back, along the, there are a long way to that parking lot, which is on the property, and a view of the Castle Park Shopping Center, which is closest to this. Around the area, with the south of the East Road, and then to the east for that, and then the Del Rock, I think, the city, and the backside of the Marshall Center, and that parking lot back to the east, belongs to the shopping center itself, and then the first grass, which should be east for that, for that. My question would be, this request at the 12th, 29th, consistent with the county's plan, consistent with the condition of use of the park here, the board, the packet, and the director, and approval subject to six conditions. First one is a virtual granted in the name of the applet owner, or the inwarded center as a private applet, so that it can, in the same place, in the applet. Two hours of operation shall be limited to within the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Council's your strength.
It's not doing nothing.
It's a small sort of building that you use for the business and electrical equipment. It takes us space and having to use their commercial retail building for storage, and they're wanting to free us from that space, and have a separate storage room.
I see on this, this picture here, it's there, it's on, the piece is on.
They'll have to do a paid access back to the building, they'll have to, I think, the carport service trucks overnight, or they'll leave it up, and you can see some of the data. But if they're adding this special purpose, or the property, the properties, which goes beyond 4,000 square foot threshold, appears to be smaller than the park.
I'm asking on the place he said he was concerned about. Have you, have you contacted the municipal office, and let them know that it will be up?
Oh, yes, they have a copy, it's active, they have a site plan, and he's responding to that. One of the questions that had a prior commission was about where the site, where the water was. The shortage of that is one I asked the engineer, yes, the site, but the branch seems to be from east to west, and whatever gets built here, is going to happen at a lot of all these standards, and depending on full range of the edge of this.
And you relayed that information to their?
I just relayed it, my information.
Okay.
He was there to ask.
Okay, I'm just, I'm asking, I have a, us receiving this, but I'm still, still asking.
Well, we don't have any reply to that. This is the concept by the applicants, and they're, they're going to do that process then.
Thank you. Any more questions for that? That, yeah, this is a bump in here, yeah, anybody that would like to go forward and speak in favor of this question?
Meeting the council, back here, back in the new services, we have a safety out of the crowd, we're in the engineering project, we're bringing up, with reasons. And as Matt mentioned, the primary reason for this is that, they currently have a building that's, you know, a very nice building, very nice commercial building, that they're using to do storage, so it's a lot better, you've got a building, about 470 square feet of storage in that building, it's just for that, say, a lot of building in that, at least that, that space, for, for storage, electrical components. One of the, two of them had a trailer, my trailer just sold off the top, a lot of people went over, and put it in the black and check, and had, and had them, and they don't have anywhere to, to secure their, their vehicles, all the trucks and stuff is there, you just got to hop, and through, obviously, a lot of put out on the fence. Only condition is, that they're extra fence, this brings, what happened to do with this whole thing, to secure the property, I mean, working part of it, they, they love the money, get a little bit of money, so a lot of those trailer, they're full of leak, it's got a lot, there's a lot of, you got to come to, electric, everything comes from the, electric vehicles, fire and stuff like that, there's a lot of money to, to, for it to be secure. For the property, we did have a little cash up here tonight, we had a front, and later day, the store owner was asked, store owner was talking to us, newer, and going towards Dean's Road, everybody had a chair here, like, it's just more of this, all the drivers that are, you know, the other subdivision. The subdivision was one, 2000 period was designed, I was in here for, we were involved with the property very many times. All this land was originally part of the commercial waterfront, this part was just kind of rim and was anything, you could put a subdivision, like, in this part, but the concept kind of others do, that just kind of rim, tracks was never part of the subdivision, never part of the area. Actually, we put all that, this was a, a part, but this is a rim and part, the commercial track and front, just that's where the ferry tracks is, the top of it, all the parks seem the same, probably same front. We want, Mr. Freeman wants to put a shop out here, people are just the best, the best use of property from the neighborhood set, just to be clear, this property is on water beach. If they don't get back, they could, 34, 33 block, it's on tomorrow, I, I figure that's the best property zone for the property. So if he doesn't give us a toll, he's not going to put a shop out there, he's going to recover his money. 33 blocks is going to be very similar, that's, that's, he, he tend to use the property as purpose of, you know, that, that's the use of property, if they don't get the results to water beach. So it's a water beach to, to neighborhood of the commercial. So, Mr. Freeman works his business, that's what his business is, he wants to be nice neighbors, he wants to keep peace in neighborhood, he feels just a much, much lower, his use, a lot lower than Russian use, this property, he wants to shed shop out there, so he can technically buy some people back there, put stuff there. In my opinion, he's sort of a very kind of neighborhood, Bruce Muller later, for the matter of saying, forever, unfortunately, that's not, you know, that's not, the best use was approved, he liked better use of the store, for some of that, and the shop he proposed.
Any questions? We're getting, here.
Uh, one of the, sir, that's all, one of the names, would you use this, come 15, 15 foot off the property, and maybe a little sink?
No, it's still a problem. We have, we have a set house, you, or this, every, everybody else, they're going to propose silver lining, we want, we have to build against that.
That's a, that's all for the property that I need to come back.
With the builder?
Yes, with the builder.
The builders is the most problematic.
Yes, the builders are the problems.
Do you have a price for that?
Uh, no, I don't have any. It's at least 25, I think, this is where, 50, 50 definitely is the number of buildings in the neighborhood, and there is a perimeter sample, I mean, there's a perimeter, you know, we're playing a hollow here, that, that even behind the barn, makes the, just a silver lining. There is a barn there, but plenty of lean, but the building behind the fences may be inside the property roof, inside the fences.
The house, they don't have, they don't lose, they don't want the property, they need that applet. They, they, those are, you know, pretty finished, but, but, well, they, part of things, no, it's hard, I mean, we're set back, you know, the building's set back, it's 23, so the setup will have to be set back.
Any further questions? So, thank you. Anybody else would like to jump in and speak in favor of this request? If you're in favor, you know. Is there anybody that would like to jump, speak in opposition to this request?
My name is Daniel, they're, they're 833 in the river, so, and I oppose the building of storage back there, we got a, I got a few concerns. First of all, the purpose of, of naming the commercial part is to put in commercial residential properties from, um, conflict and, you know, legislative, and I don't try to, that, uh, the purpose of the naming of the part is to keep that, the regular units and commercial entities impacting one another financially, investing in property life, and by doing that, I, I create substantial investment in finance, and this is impacting financially, and as well as, it, it, after, or, don't, after, don't, well, our brothers, commercial entities, in relation to, uh, our brother, uh, they, and I got other reason, I, I, this would be good, generally, to say that this was never a part of subdivision, but it was, it was, it was, man, growing up, back in the day, with the, a lot of green space in the development, that was a part of, always had me, green comfort, if, if it's, uh, angel, angel eventually gave it to the bank, very, very, uh, now, but only totally a green space for the entire, for that, so, uh, well, one of the things that I have just, along the property, and I said, if you sincerely, that's in, I'm, I'm facing this, I think, 17 years, I, you know, it depends, it depends if they stay, definitely got my sprinkling system outside of the line, so, if this, if this property does its, uh, to a commercial, I mean, it impacts in terms of, uh, pollution, I mean, I, whether I'm materially, give, handle, uh, more solutions, you know, be another factor, be, uh, speaking here, location that they're at now, to think of, those are just some, some concerns, you know, uh, one of the requirements I do want, uh, assist on, is that we do have some lack of, uh, simply, because that is a property, uh, all of this, due to, uh, the commercial piece of property, gone to a residential, gotta have something, and I think it's 20 feet, they, they already proposed a disperimentary, that they might have to say, they're silver, that's 20 feet, and I like to see, 30, and I like to see, away from the property, of the, that, still, I can give you, generally, though, that's, on top of that, and that's a good sign, I've been asking for a lot, but I'm really not going to change, on green space and commercial activity, I like to see, not only practice events, but also, uh, street officials, I mean, so, we're being impacted, and we're not forever, uh, our financial, uh, loss, you know, it's part of what she said, our, you know, the commercial activity, right, kind of, that, that's, that's my position, and I'm sure I've got some major, uh, hopes, there's, there on person.
Any questions?
I mean, we, we, so, I'm going to reverse that. Um, right now, the way is, um, RV, it's 20, and they can go up there right now without our permission, which means they can come up for us, and they can put 30 or 40 apartments in that space, and they don't have to be our permission, your permission, or us permission, okay? They go, the apartments are high, over, you're a man, computer house, whatever case may be, and they can do that, it's more, what they're trying to do is, we're telling them to get a party, or, essentially, a storage building, so they can put their apartments in, to store, and that's it. So, what I'm trying to say is, I'm just trying to know that, if your concern is increasing, and, you know, looking upon you all these other things, you're definitely going to get that to apartments, and most, remember this, honestly, where it's out, using your people, parties, so I'm just concerned you be aware, you know, I mean, that, that, here, but it seems that, uh, all of them stay, see, you guys are really leaning toward that, you're not, you're not, you're not, you're not, it's only they want to do it, let it go like that, and we'll count it there, but, to go from commercial, go to commercial, it just seems like it's, it's on, it's impacting a lot more, because I know, I know the worst, and, but it, never going to, any, I, and lost, and, and, it is, but, I, I appreciate you saying the fact that they can do that, that's, that's, you know, I, 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 any questions?
It's been there 17 years.
17 years, and it seems like the, the new survey that they set is, well off that, technically, because my sprinkling system shouldn't be outside of property, they're setting, can't on the inside of the property, it ain't grown that big, outside, it's, it's flat, that's that amount, it's not going to take, uh, any, so, you guys see, any questions?
Um, just question, Mr. Freeman, do we have any information on the survey, or, on the property? Is it going to be difficult to get that?
Uh, no, that, that all over, in our, that is record, it's not the whole, it's, for pilots, uh, which is, uh, especially in the It's not the whole package, it's only, you know, the pilot's, uh, which is, uh, especially the survey, you know, some of them, uh, that's between surveys. Uh, we need some survey, two surveys or two, see how, uh.
So, so I'm going to say another time.
Well, two, two different surveys, two surveyors, if you're not in agreement, about the property, I won't find out very much, um, see if you're all right. Uh, you have a survey that's one year ago, surveyers offered this this year, and they have a, uh, survey their, um, particularly the things that are, like, hurt, it's all clear, or like, um, and it's, it should be correct. If they're not, you may be correct. And that's so bad, we can't, uh, in respect to surveys.
May, um, Chris Johnson talking about he's concerned about some relation to some silver, I mean, uh, what amount of work would that be? The treatment? What amount of work, I don't know, that there is?
Well, we're not, not, I mean, what we're currently using is about thirty-seven hundred feet square deep, or we, we drop a wire, conduit, ladder, boom. There, there, there's no manufacturing, there's no pollution, there's no arsenic, we don't store any kind of, we don't store gas or paint, we, we have nothing, they're, 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 we don't use, you know.
How much noise?
We don't work on weekends, we don't work at night. I mean, our hour is seven in the morning, about afternoon. Biggest noise you may hear is a, a four lift under the truck, we get shit in the lights or water, that's, that's, that's the biggest we can see, and that will cease if I walk in.
Any questions?
I'm sorry, I can't.
How come we don't have, uh, any?
We're at the, the center seventeen.
But I, I, I'm still, uh, concerned about the set back issue, and where your fence is, um, you know, being planted, see, this, this is not an actual thing that we might have a fence just to buy it, only property. But most of the main investment, the impact, uh, we'd rather have a fence set back because we just want to feel that's property, uh, that, that you're getting impacted. So we need to go back to the session a little bit. I think maybe, uh, we gotta have a fence to go separate with the shoe.
We have a issue between major properties, basically more properties, uh, naturally, but it's. Easements that may have a huge, high effect, installation, uh, of the, of the, of the access. Whatever, just the motion that comes from the dog, the people, the stuff.
What I said, that's, well, if you, if you're commercial, uh, it's, in there, a lot of, you see, it would be if you have commercials, I mean, the neighborhood, it's, it's a state, it's a property, you know, you're voting on the law. You need Seattle, uh, it's a, uh, if the neighborhood returns, see, it's, uh, it's, uh, the neighborhood is not, uh, saying, it's not saying, it's, uh, part of, you may, uh, if it's an R P, it was, uh, Commander R P. Then you're correct, it's, uh, I think I owe them that, this, well, we're gonna rock out the fence, since the, uh, board, it's not fire, I mean, it's, and, trying to get some privacy for this order.
But your neighbors have a fence, you first, but set back, it did, in this, uh, correct.
Security lights, maybe shooting for my property. There was a request that they enter a fence that is not a speculation. I would recommend that be amended to at least an eight-foot fence to cut down on the noise sound of the building effect to our property. And that if you should approve this, I would request a little easement off of our property. I've made pictures, but I don't have the ability to show them here to where the three homeowners that is suggested to this property. It maintained about seven or eight feet, maybe ten feet past our property line to make it look more appealing on the backside of our property. And also we're trying to cut down on varmints, up hill service snakes that have come out of where, but rabbits and bargains and arbusts and things like that. Also we cannot be able to maintain that property for more than just the moment of five years. And, uh, my recommendations to you is to do your, my request is that you can add this change. Now thank you for your time and your observation. Thank you, Sergeant.
Is there anybody else? So any questions? Thank you.
That's the city of Arkansas, Arkansas town. Anybody, uh, whether it's your partners or office, or you use the, uh, full, uh, kind of, uh, those are, that's, uh, your diagram shows exactly what the law is. It's not allowed across our property. Uh, there's a second one.
Any other questions? Uh, thank you. Still open for anybody in opposition to this request. Saying now that the question is out, council for action, council to your.
May I make a motion if they further presume that this request is a.
Say yes. Motion to the second. For good conditions. Motion to the second and further discussion. All the favors or hands. Open opposition, second sign. This motion.
Move on to the seat. Pass the vote. Okay, so the organic first.
If, when he was asking you, his motion did not end, he failed, that's not something that, uh,
Much to approve.
The request was saying that it fails.
Move on to the city consideration for all this, agrees up to total of forty-one point two acres of foundation. Highway personal, land development, and city agriculture through all the acres, agrees with us on the big rate that parks.
Present. These things here, this is a pair of landations, um, for tradition, that has, so perhaps it's for, uh, here for purposes to discuss here. But only if it's time to make a decision, we separate those, uh, say all we have to do is open the market first and then the annexation. So with that, this is the plan station, it's, uh, acres. Partly belong to the west side of Madison Island, um, south of the digits, six minutes. We recall recent adaptation, uh, depending, uh, here together with the property, uh, here for, this is much larger acres. Closer to that, uh, as the, uh, set of patterns of the area, um, countless, uh, three year, uh, seven plus, uh, also land development and city agriculture. They're requesting a two zone, uh, in the city lines. The outlet of the city, uh, property, uh, by security, that is already in the city lines. Many purposes, the center, the solid layout of the property, uh, under lots of, uh, one more purpose. Um, there exists a property, uh, that, uh, as this is the subject property, uh, they'll be, this is great. Everything there is currently community activity center. Um, the proposal is to change this area for the industrial activity center, uh, all the activation. Uh, actually favoring the, the area designation of the park, uh, in the city lines. Area limits, you see, um, this is pretty, the maximum weapons on part of the property. Without us airport, you can see the beginning of the near certain, uh, the vacant property, uh, much of which is unknown. Uh, part of it is also around the city. Uh, this is the site of a creature, uh, by number two, uh, which we've been talking about. Uh, that is survey, uh, should race pack road, which is the northern part of the city, race pack roads, uh, enclosed. And dedicated by last family, uh, which is the parents, uh, parcels. The zoning survey, this is a little complicated because of the three year, the seven acres, uh, currently in system account. In the area property, this is the driveway, uh, a little like a fountain, it's on Madison highway, which is moved from west into the property from Madison highway. And then race pack road, uh, which was reported, uh, the subject property gives that part, which you see on the left. The left side of race track, uh, the front on the right is the, uh, existing property that's already in system. Uh, when you order that as a highway, you see the parents, uh, currently not where she crossed the street. Uh, where the other three sides, uh, so, uh, the south of that, uh, last apartment, uh, Madison highway. Will look further, it's large, that's how, uh, with this, uh, distribution. These were both, uh, here, uh, uh, and section, uh, this is, uh, uh, these are the parts, this is, uh, the time, uh, the only power. This is responsible for the, uh, 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 so, uh, years before the annexation, we did, uh, uh, the variable rock, uh, there would be period, uh, they had others should be, uh, should see the annexation, but, uh, if we had the city, the city lines would also be a, uh, essentially, uh, uh, we got extra pressure to.
Nothing. We have a new addition.
We said, uh, uh, uh. The, uh, president of the run, uh, is, uh, very location for this property.
Mayor, if I could any of the questions.
So, motion is second and further discussion. All the favors show hands. Now, thank you. Pass. That's the resuming. Now, presentation.
Senator, if I could any of the questions.
Second. Move on to the idea of the question is second. All the favors show hands. Now, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Motion for the primary, or should be even move on to ordinance resolution, but by a A consideration request to approve the resolution, and undue hardship for the water waste water system for potash and subvention to the smart utility director. Move on.
Need the mayor, now. Um, in February of two thousand twenty-four, this year's order of the E D. Uh, matter several members of the utility management to discuss the coverage of our water system in its history for disinfection by products. Uh, during that meeting, it was explained that either the system may be completely uh rehab on the current uh waterway and address the disinfection by product issues, or if they had to experiment or permit and have residents admit to the city of our water system. Congress are committed to locating the city of Alhassan also behind um when Nixie there contains forty-five other infrastructures. Global water system boundary is provided by private uh water system currently administered by four utility management. Given the facts of issue, Congress is not admitted to the city of Alhassan waste water system. Uh, Congress recommends for certified individual product secretary secretaries for each structure. Due to an undue hardship, all residents must connect to the Alhassan waste water system by March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Resolution has been prepared from an undue hardship with water and waste water systems of the Congress. The staff recommends to E S U to find an undue hardship for the water and waste water systems of the Congress. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Now.
I just, you know, this is in my mission, but uh, I just want to say thank you, Jason, and to you for recognizing these folks, we're rocking her in this, and um, appreciate the leadership, her leadership, it's important, yeah, but uh, something that will give them time to prepare some co-issues.
I think that, you know, once the, once it's approved, the plaintiffs uh now will actually be able to declare for now, which are certified, uh, small groups of restaurants. Um, that they're in Congress should be able to do, so we can tell them, you know, they have to pay by, so.
Eric.
This is how I would solve it, it needs to be. They're on your side. They should look at that dude, they're, and the problem is used to this is they're set of tanks in the back of us all, please, and our stuff in the front, so it's one take, there was some point to be able, for this to get a part, they will have to take here, that's, sorry.
This was Eric's idea.
Yes, and, 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 all to, 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 to. They're coming back to you.
You know, they would have charged him for the, that was a part of, 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 of. This Mr. Joyce was saying until when he began to put in action on that, once they then caused with this direction by, which is the organic, and organic compounds reacting to the chemical, which is chlorine, that's when it, it see their, there's an seal open that, once that it seemed that that's when the special happened, and that's where we are. Then the person. Just one.
Now.
Just right.
Second. Uh, motion is second and further discussion. All the favors show hands. Now, thank you. On the six years contracts and agreements, except for consideration for request to approve engineering design services for replacement of the shelf, milk or press, equipment U G, mixed water control plant, of prices. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, now, for my seniors, we have the consultant assistant city and implementing the Alhassan management program, highlighted the Alhassan master plan in two thousand nine, and that will include and other great water pollution control plant. Basically, the process related included a new thing, water facility with two belt coastal presses, and Haller Lample system house and two-story shelter and trouble loading plant. The city completed expansion of the water G U C plant in two thousand sixteen, at a new green field site, a parts and water infrastructure that included one belt coastal press and one rather belt, the, the belt coastal press is started two thousand sixteen, and the new water G U C plant was refurbished in it, has enough to the end of the useful life, and before I don't know the fact of issue, when I say refurbished, it was basically before the two thousand sixteen, when we were completely disassembling, the, the system wasn't there, it was already back to old headworks, so what the city was making was to boot that belt coastal press to the one existing, where we are down with the G U C plant, that's when, that's why I'm just refurbished you. Um, fact of issue, the project is for professional engineering service to include the system design, preliminary design, final design, and system during the bidding for the demolition of existing belt coastal press at water G U C plant. Um, that also put the ball feeds us on the stall by the new belt press with the new actual ball of feeds system in its place. Staff recommends to the eight married consorts, agreements made about senior staff in the nine hundred sixty-two thousand six hundred ten hours. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Now.
I think so. Thank you, Jason, I think you're.
Now, so, just your prayers.
May I make a comment?
Second. Second, and further, so, now, so, favors show hands. That's. But uh, as a being consideration request to approve professional services through the term to engineer for upgrades of the electric water pollution control plant to smart, current.
Definitely look at that. Settle down. No pages here. With the, with the. Um, this is a third, this is a long service during, as you're aware, uh, we've got a good, good work during on the east number side, um, and we've identified need to maintain improvements in our water pollution control plant. Uh, we've also identified need to regard to a burning process with our, uh, industrial retreat performances, we have a step, uh, we have a step current, so we're both there, and we pushed that up into newer version to add some different thresholds, so we got reassess our industrial retreat program, our people, of, of collective discussion, and to all the staff, we have, uh, I've got the right post attached for this, um, compared to page five of the right post. All of the page six. That's the page that it takes a day to engineer, and you've got a variety of things here that apply to cost of, you've got a series of lump sum fees that are ready for, uh, reports or permits that are required for this, we modify our, we got the issue that, like, due to what you need, they got working to prove it, um, because it's a major facility, that's our system, and so those lump sum fees are for part information package, it's, uh, operation , maybe people that report for how it works, the system is upgraded, and there's a rest of things, so they can, uh, and then you've got the, actually the design options, so the, the cost of those, we're, there's my cost of construction, um, at a very big half percent, which is industry standard, um, and then you've got a phase for other power fees, that's where you need to help with burn, and that does some retreat moments, so you can find out, uh, during the, 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 uh, this, this very project, the construction costs, uh, for the water, water pollution control plant upgrades, this last fifty-four million, including sixty-one thousand dollars, um, is a very, probably I think that now is a little bit short, just to say, but, uh, the basis for design fee was well sent out to cover industry sector survey, design, permitting, costs, as well as some, uh, the amount that we presented during, uh, the country's, uh, thirty thousand, you know, which is what I assess of what we anticipate to occur, uh, what happened, and have to keep her back to ask more money on this, and then be held up on a series of survey services, so. That's basically it, uh, capital, we're all charged to the group this year, judging currency, uh, desire, the, 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 well, basically, so. And then, sir, person who has had all this, and it's a lot, and, 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 and,[743.92]